Okay, thank you. It's Tuesday, March 19th. We'll pull the meeting together here. It's about 8:25, a little bit late. We have a short agenda. Our first matter is a resolution. This is the resolution regarding the Chappaqua Central School District, application for a preliminary subdivision plat tree removal permit, steep slopes permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan approvals Button Hook Road and Gary Drive. So we were here last night. We have another piece of business also on this, right Jennifer? And Sabrina, we have an amended secret statement here. And Steve's not here, so Sabrina, you want to listen on that?
Sure. Apparently, there has been a policy change in regards to the New York State DEC and the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. In the past, when we've submitted information to them and applicants have submitted information to them, they've always written back and said, "There's no concern regarding bats or bad habitats." A new policy change, as you've seen with the Sunshine Children's Home and other applications, they now write back and request that applicants conduct a Phase One analysis, which would include a deeper dive in the habitat investigation and potentially result in the limitations on tree clearing during bat breeding seasons. Thank you, Jerry. So in this instance, we have conditioned the resolution. So that change has been made. Unfortunately, it happened in between your decision-making on this. We added a condition that said that the applicant has a choice to either do a Phase One, consistent with US Fish and Wildlife and New York State DEC protocols, or off the bat, restrict the tree clearing during bat breeding season. That is a condition. It required us to amend your negative declaration and to bring causes to why that happened, which the language in your revised Part Three covers that. And then you'll find the condition also in the resolution that came after your last review of this.
I think the applicant agreed to this during our discussions, and we just found that we didn't have this in the document. So this is one of the changes that we wanted to make.
We have no problem.
Right. So we had been talking about this anyway, but now we just really codified it and put it in here. So I guess the first order of business is then to adopt the amended negative declaration.
Unless we have comments?
Unless we have comments, yes.
Okay. I have some.
Okay.
Two of them are, these are really from my --
Is this on the amended?
Yeah, on the amended version.
Not the resolution, the negative declaration.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I have no comments on that.
Okay. If not, is there a motion to adopt the amended neg-deck? Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. So then we come to the resolution, which again incorporates the changes that Sabrina mentioned, the changes that incorporated in the amended neg-deck. And then do we have questions, comments on the proposed resolution? By the way, we have a hard copy here that's presented tonight. Is this the same exact version that we got emailed?
Yes, it is.
No further changes?
Same exact.
Great. Put this one away. Get my work one. Thank you.
You can speak to your appugination.
Appugination, yes. All right. I have a comment on page 14, or question actually, on page 14, and it's in line one. But you're probably gonna have to go to page 13 and start the sentence there. My question is, I don't understand "be" and "they." I understand "they" are conditionally approved. The sentence reads, I'll truncate it, page 13 to 14. "Be resolved the application for approval of a plat and the approval of the steep slope permit, tree permit, water pollution ban." And as described herein, "be," and "they," are hereby conditionally approved. What is "be"? Given, I don't understand English. Is that just archaic?
It's archaic, yeah. It's the way almost, I mean, almost every single resolution that I've ever seen your board consider has that language. It's sort of a holdover from years and years and years past.
So old is actually going back now.
It's certainly, you know, an old-fashioned way to describe the fact that the application is hereby conditionally approved. I think we can strike it all together and just say, "described herein are hereby conditionally approved."
We, I don't, we don't have to do it for this if it's the thing, but we should make an effort to --
Let's take it out.
To update our language to the year 2019.
We'll make it into English that's current?
Sounds sort of like Chaucer. I like that. That was kind of nice.
Yeah, it was. It was.
Want to take it out? Fine.
Took me back to when I learned Latin. They use that language.
Your king's language.
Yes, it may.
I did want to mention that the town engineer did want to clarify, just to make sure that everyone's on board, that we wanted to mention the comments regarding the draft resolution, in particular, lines 57 to 60 of page three, lines 1 and 3 of page four, and condition number 33 of page 20, which are referring to the clearing and removal of all sediment debris from the existing 24-inch CMP and TV inspection report, with all to be performed by the CCSD. So he thought there was some perhaps misunderstanding between Randy and Jerry. But Jerry's understanding, which kind of rules, is that that will be performed by the applicant and that the condition that we have in here is going to remain unchanged.
So those are, that particular condition is one that's listed under the category of conditions that are to be satisfied before the chairman signs the final plat. Remember, this is just preliminary subdivision approval. So if there's some amendment to the agreement between the applicant and town engineer and DPW before approval of the final plat, they're going to be coming back to this board to approve the final plat. That can always be amended if necessary. But right now, this is the town's understanding of what that agreement is.
But that condition sort of appears in at least three different places in the resolution. And he just wanted to make sure that the applicant understood that that was the arrangement, that the town would be looking to the applicant to actually perform the test at their expense.
Unfortunately, Randy is traveling. He can't be here. I was not at that meeting. But I guess the back and forth was, they speculated it might cost about $15,000 to clean the pipes. Randy went back to CCSD, got approval that they would contribute the $15,000, that he thought was the AI agreement. I'm in contact with the vendor now, getting a proposal for all this. So we hope to have that, and then we could sit down. And hopefully, it's going to come in about that, and then it'll just be taped. So yeah, we're going to work through that.
Okay, good. He just wanted me to make sure that was known. Okay. Anyone else? Any other questions or issues?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Page 15. I'm confused. Item 10 on line 10, it talks, you know, about the steep slope work permit, and that they shall attain it no later than three years from the filing. The planning board may grant one six-month extension to this three-year period. Is that what we normally say? Because we've gone through a lot of steep slope extensions beyond six months.
Yes, but they required --
Yes, this is your standard language, and it's taken out of the town.
Okay, that's fine.
So this is an automatic extension, right? For the first six months?
The six months.
And then they have to come back if there's anything after that? That's my understanding.
And where does it say they can come back? Is that in --
That's when they send the letters to us and ask.
I know, but this says --
One time.
Yes, it says one time. It sounds like they may grant up to one.
The planning board, as I understand, historically, has interpreted this to mean that an applicant can request additional beyond this one, and it's at the discretion of the planning board to grant that.
That's fine. So I'll put that in the same category as "be."
And I just want to note also, with respect to this provision and paragraph nine also, it notes that the three years starts at the filing of the resolution of the final subdivision plat approval, not the preliminary plat approval. Because, you know, they can't do the work now, so it's not really fair to have the time to start ticking until they get final.
The last time I --
Nothing is not fair.
It's page 18, line 37, or actually, make it 38. I have a suggestion. I mean, sanitary is a sewer. Sewer is for stormwater. But more importantly than those minor comments, I really feel we should have put potable water lines here too, because it's, I don't want people to say, "Oh, I just read the four things I have to look for and hit the water pipe." The rest of it was just sterling reading. That's good.
I had a few minor things. Page 13, going back to King's English. In the third whereas clause that begins on line 33, I thought it was missing a verb.
What line?
The whereas clause that begins on line 33 through 37. I don't think there's a verb, as in what, who does what.
Is there a "be," a "be-e"?
No. No, and I think it's a sort of paraphrasing of the condition that's on page 15, number 12, beginning on line 20. Just thought there was --
So the applicant shall adhere to? Does that fix the problem?
The language, I just think there, yeah, there's an act of verb that's missing there.
Yeah, it's just a series of phrases. There's nothing wrong with that. Probably needs something.
We're harking back to times of old.
I'm gonna start reciting the prologue to Chaucer's.
We need to start teaching grammar in school again.
You have to diagram a sentence.
And then we have to remember it.
It's all text language. It's got strung and wiggly.
That's not good on that subject.
On page 14, number five, line 33. Should that be development coverage for lots 1 through 6 inclusive? Shall not exceed 115% of the figure, et cetera?
Six is special, isn't it?
Well, six is special, but it's special in a different way.
There's no development coverage for lot 6.
There's no development?
Line 29.
Why is there no development?
Because lot 6 is that stormwater lot.
But it is being developed with drainage and --
But it's non-buildable in the drainage.
Okay, is that what you define as drainage development?
The definition of development coverage is --
Has to be a structure?
Yeah, development.
Above ground structure?
Above ground, not in ground.
Okay.
So even though it's included in --
Five, and your six is the open space lot, right?
There's six building lots.
Building coverage in the first line.
So there's seven lots altogether, you mean?
I think the open space lot is --
Then that should be a six.
Okay, that should be a six.
That works because of line 29, as Shirley just noted.
So it's six lots plus the seventh lot.
Yes, a lot for six. Catching up.
Yeah, you changed it.
So if you go down into line 52, does that lot 6 reconcile, or is that become lot 7?
No.
No, okay.
That's six.
Then on page 16 in C, I think there's a problem with the word "to," and I don't know what it is, so.
C, on line 7?
Line, yeah, beginning on line 7.
I don't know. Is it Shelby confirmed?
Oh wait, should correspond to that Asha.
The comma's missing. If you put a comma after "road," I think it works. Sort of. It's better, but it's not still, it's still not English.
Which, the word "which" should correspond?
Which should, yeah. I think that --
All right.
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah, but a comma also, "which should."
And then on page 22, line 47, is something missing after "as built," which is a "as-built plan," and "as-built."
It should be "as-built drawing."
Drawing.
Drawing?
Drawing.
Okay.
Do I hear one?
We could use it, maybe "plat" or something.
The eighth-grade teachers of the world would be very proud of us.
The eighth-grade teachers of the world right now don't teach English. I don't know what they teach, but it's not English. So they might be annoyed, actually.
You could tell this is not a board of head meeting.
Right.
Because one would not make that comment.
Yes, save our school system, yes.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have something on page 17, and maybe I'm just missing this, but B through D here, talks about sightlines. Did we not establish sightlines here? And is it just that they aren't on the drawing? Or do they still need to be determined?
There are notes to be on the plan, probably for future. Bob likes to do that, even though it's on the plan, he wants to make sure that it's listed on the plan, that it's supposed to be there.
Some of the sightline is supposed to be there, but in a, if, so if we're, right. Okay, so, but if we're developing, if this is a development application eventually, does, just like there are for drainage structures, there are sightline, there's a sightline design impact on grading, so on and so forth. I mean, the sightlines actually have to be established, right, by topography and all that stuff. Has that not been, am I wrong? Has that not been determined yet?
Yes, he's requesting 50-foot intervals.
It's been done, and we have actually updated. B has been done. We've added the elevations at 50 foot. And intervals, the thing we have to do is D. We have to, I think we just have to adjust some of the things for the speed of the road. But that's something that we're working through as the conditions of --
So there are no design changes? It's just getting along the drawings?
Yeah, they're still the same. It's just tweaking.
Okay.
And there are areas on the plat showing where sightline easements are going to be necessary.
And the surveyor's going to be doing the meets and bounds for those and adding that to the plat.
And I think the establishment of the easements is the most important thing, because otherwise, you know, pillars arrive, bushes arrive, things like that.
The notes on the plan, so that they know.
Anyone else saying? Greg? Sheila? Okay, as amended, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have amended the preliminary subdivision.
That's correct.
Yep.
So it's a partial relinquishment of you.
So I just want to thank you. I'm Christine Ackerman. I'm the superintendent. And allowing us to move forward with this frees up some necessary funding to help support our Greeley program and reshape some of our instructional spaces for our kids. And I know this has been a long process for everybody, except me, because I'm relatively new. So I just, I want to thank everyone's work to make this happen for our kids. So thank you very much. Very appreciated.
We appreciate the work of all the people on your side that participated in this project, because they listened, and they tried to be helpful as best they could, which usually was, they were 100% able to do what we were thinking. And they came back with better ideas and differences and everything else. So it took a long time, three years almost, and, but I think it's going to be a great project.
Labor of love, so we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to our next item. This is a public hearing for Shay. This is an application for a site development plan approval for change of use, 45 South Greeley Avenue.
I don't know how to get that there. You'll have to push them.
Oh, yeah, the little white thing behind it, yeah.
Little white thing?
Can you press it?
Yeah.
What's she gonna do? Dish for your keys and your wallet? Like the TSA goes through.
It's up there. Somebody left it there. Sorry, I left it, because I don't know whose it is.
Not that we'll be able to remember.
Yeah. It doesn't look technical, and it's not moving. Talking to the wrong guy. You are in trouble.
Can you do it? I always go to the next one. I lock the wire. It's not coming. I don't want to do it anymore. No.
No, we just need fewer.
So I can't miss that chocolate. When that apple with the short sword and book that marks a person to the root?
Yeah, so what is that? It's great to me. Probably to you too.
Oh, God.
Somebody at one time changed. What's that darn network?
There you go, it's flashing.
There you go.
Yeah.
Well.
That's really good.
Go down to the, want me to do it, Chuck?
Yeah, please. Don't have a mouse here, right?
Finger, his finger goes.
Yeah, I know.
I'm with you, Chuck.
I know, he came up with it.
It's all industry. I think they do this on purpose.
Absolutely. Shay, yes?
It's the deep text state.
Come on, baby.
Okay, which one?
Anymore?
This one?
Yeah.
I don't think you should be calling Sabrina baby.
What did I say?
And if you're going to do that, check how sharp her shoes are.
I'm wearing closets.
Doesn't matter, this is maintenance.
Open up the other two drawers.
It is possible to do whatever you --
So that I can click to them if they ask, yeah, that one?
No, it's okay. It's okay.
I think she's got it.
That one, great. Now I can find them. There they are, right up there.
No, you just click on the tab up top.
Perfect, thank you.
Let's do this, please.
You can make it bigger.
Okay.
Yeah, great. Let me get this in, then I'll be, what did I do?
No, you just closed it.
But you just closed it.
You go back down to the folder.
The one thing you shouldn't have clicked on. Click on that.
Go up into the folder. There you go. Now go back, scroll down to your PB1, double-click. No, no.
Click outside of that.
Yeah, there you go. Don't press the little X's up top.
Yes, thank you. No. Yes, just hit the tab, but not the X. Charles Napoli, for the owner, Sam J, at 45 South Greeley Avenue in Chappaqua. And we have a request for a change of use. We have a building that was designed for offices on the second floor, and where they were adaptable, and we would like to change it now to apartments on the second floor. And I'm just going to take you through the building, if you don't mind. The sightline shows the first, the ground floor area. This is South Greeley Avenue, and you'll know this is the Houlihan Building. There's a little ramp that goes up to the offices. Houlihan is using the whole first floor, Houlihan Real Estate. There are, there's an entrance from Greeley Avenue here that goes upstairs. There's an entrance from the back parking lot. That goes at this area. And then there's an entrance to two apartments back here. And that entrance brings you to this area of the building. So directly above this first floor area is this area, two existing apartments. And these apartments are duplex apartments. They are, they're accessed by, accessed by this stairway. And you go in this door to that apartment, you go to that door. Each apartment has stairways up to their bedroom level, bedroom, bathroom, storage, laundry. On the first floor, originally, and I'm going to go to that first floor. Originally, and this got turned around now, now this is Greeley Avenue. And the original design for this space were two offices, but each were adaptable for residential. They each had bathrooms. And in this case, that tub was not built. That, it was a closet. And so all you had to do is have a tub, and then you have an apartment. What we're asking for is to take these two offices and make two apartments. Now go back to that drawing. And here's again Greeley Avenue on this side. There's one apartment accessible by this corridor. And here's the other apartment accessible by the same corridor to this area. And anyway, so, and they're not really one-bedroom apartments. They're studios. And you could, it's a sort of loft kind of plan, where we have a wall here that I think incorporates storage, and it's flat-screen television, and a few other areas that we can use for storage. If the wall doesn't go to the ceiling, it stays two feet short of the ceiling, and it has a dresser on this side. This is the design. And of course, storage there, closet there. And here's the kitchen, bathroom, and a little eating area. It's a 600 and plus square foot apartment. There's an issue about should, somewhere along in 2007, somebody said that this would be one apartment. And I can't remember that. I wasn't here for that. It's not my document. This was built in 2000, the drawings were 2006.
So you did the drawings in 2006?
These drawings are 2006. Obviously, I got approval before 2006. There's a 2007 document out that says something about that was supposed to be one big apartment. I have a problem, so I'm asking you for two apartments instead of one big apartment. And I also have consideration, because if that adds up to 1,200 square feet in our business district, in the business retail parking, accessory apartments are not allowed to be more than 1,000. So, and at the same time, these two units are very rentable in this market. Back in 2007, it's different. Now they're very, right near the train station, and they work real good. What we do have, in a sense, is two apartments on this side. There's a, this wall here is a firewall. It protects the corridor exits. It's also a firewall that separates this part of the floor with that part of the floor. And so we have --
Is it concrete masonry firewall or sheet rock?
No, 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 it's a sheet rock, yeah. And it's a fully sprinkled building, so it doesn't have to be, you know, a full two-hour.
Okay, but on that issue, what, are there two means of egress in these apartments?
Yeah, well, in a typical bedroom apartment, this is a means of egress. That window is an egress window. So there's one way out there.
How high is that, up over the ground?
It's about 10 to 12 feet, not even. It's first floor, eight feet up, and then another three. So it's totally --
Does that meet code?
Yeah. The apartment will meet all codes.
The fire code, then.
Correct. And we spent a lot of time, if I may, Chuck. Chuck came in today, met with the building inspector. I spent some time speaking with the building inspector. You know, I tried to, the issue being is that there was a note on the 2007 plan approving the construction of this building that in the future, if the office use should be converted to residential use, it should be turned into one apartment, not two apartments. Today, I cannot find anything. Today, I, I cannot find anything, and after thorough investigation by the building inspector, review by myself, we cannot find any relationship of that requirement to any of today's codes, unless one of the board members has any historical recollection of why that be the case. There's really nothing that we can come up with in relation to fire and safety codes or building codes that would require this to be one apartment as opposed to two apartments. And as Chuck pointed out, our code, our, uh, business retail zoning district restricts apartments greater than a thousand square feet.
Could the one apartment be to avoid the handicap elevator?
We have examined that thoroughly, and, and because there is not a full third, accessible third floor in the building, an elevator is not required. So I, I thought, going back to the minutes of two thousand and seven, going through the history, there was discussion of the elevator. I raised it in my initial memo to you. It stayed in there until today, when Chuck came in and was working with the building inspector, who is here tonight. So, so it's really.
Just a few other things about the elevator. It says that it has to be over three thousand square feet. The floor area has to be over three thousand square feet where the elevator meets, and this is less than three thousand square.
Yeah, I didn't think you needed one until I read your notes saying that.
Right, and I didn't know whether or not I needed one, I was trying to decipher the one versus two apartments.
Gotcha.
And if you look at ADA, ADA would like the first floor of the public space to be accessible, which it is, uh, the first floor, but not necessarily the second floor, because it's not the right size. Even if it was, the units would have to be adaptable, but not necessarily all handicapped accessible. What we are doing is, we're making each one of those bathrooms adaptable to grab bars, which the ADA code requires in apartments, 'cause somebody could be walking around with crutches, not necessarily a wheelchair. Okay, and, and so that's, that's, so the request is, the two units, uh, on that floor, separate entrance, um, uh, so it's, it's really two, two apartments building, two, two apartment, two, whatever, front and the back. Um, the other thing is, is that, if, if you notice, this note, the lighting is staying exactly the same as what the building is. No change to that, no adds, no subtracts. And secondly, the refuge is, is, is in the back parking lot. That's where the garbage containers are now, and all the shops, and everybody on that, in that strip is using those containers, so are we.
So the one thing that I would ask, Chuck, is that we just get the detail of what the lighting is today, if it's remaining. You know, I don't know that the board wants changes, but if you're saying it's remaining as is today, we should at least have some description of the lighting that is there, and of the location of the garbage in the back on the plan.
Is the lighting incandescent?
Yeah, it's one of these. It's, uh, it's in the overhangs right here.
Can it be something else that's less power, uses less power?
Be you change the bulb to twenty-five watts. I mean, but, right, I don't, I don't think there's, I don't know if there's a problem with it now, I, I mean, uh.
Well, no, what I'm talking about is if you have a sixty watt bulb, can't you change the bulb to be a twenty-five watt bulb that gives sixty watts of light?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, if that's what you were saying before, then that's what I'm looking for.
But I, I can't tell you what the bulb is, I'd have to go find out and mark it down, and.
Right, that's what Sabrina's asking for, what lighting plan is, yeah. So we can, we have a record of it.
Yep.
Yeah.
You can count the bulb.
While we're talking about lighting plans, have you seen the barber shop over on Lower King? Let's talk about a lighting, they have those, I don't know if you've seen the window at night, you should go drive by it. I don't know if you have a jurisdiction over that, who does? Speaking about lighting plans, anyway, I, I had to get that.
That is a digression.
All right, but if you could.
Have you seen it?
No. You can never tell Tom.
I just, you know.
My suggestion to make your life easier would be to take the fixed lighting.
New agenda barber shop.
That is in the apartments.
Yeah.
And look at the bulbs. And then, um, you don't have to tell us what they are, what they are now, but you can tell us how you're gonna reduce them, you know, for the plan.
Yeah, just make a declaration.
If they need reduction, yes.
Or tran- change them from an incandescent to an LED bulb, so they're saving electricity.
Yeah, we're trying to save electricity.
Just changing bulb.
It's an energy saving.
LED, I'll say it's gonna be a new LED light.
There you go.
I'll show you where.
Twenty-five hundred kilo, or less.
Well, twenty-five, three thousand, all is pretty much the same color. We'll talk about that next month.
This is what brings us back.
No.
Again.
The other project. Uh, is there any, is there any, is there anything?
So, the, the issue, we really don't know why that we had this, this.
No.
This designation on that two thousand and seven plan.
No.
And we can't really find anything that really would prevent us from granting the, the two, the two apartments.
Does Tom have something to offer?
Tom, you have to come up to the mic.
We researched this quite.
Tom, you gotta come up to the mic.
We researched this quite in depth today, and there's nothing that speaks to why this was phrased as such. And there's no fire and life safety issues making this a tandem apartment as opposed to a single.
Okay, good, good. Okay, any questions? Sabrina, did you hit everything that you wanted to hit?
Yep.
Any questions, anyone?
It's fine, I do, we just, the, the request was to identify how many it would need. It is less than the office use, they're part of the parking district, but it's, again, putting the details on the plans and in the records, so we have them.
Okay.
So is there a motion open to the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You mesmerized us. Sorry. Any comments from the public on this application? So we have to rely on the television audience, huh? Okay.
They're phoning in right now.
Are they lighting up?
So it's a type two, uh, so, okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we don't have a resolution, because we didn't have this information resolved at this point, so should we direct staff to, uh, put together a resolution for our next meeting?
Please do.
Our next meeting?
No.
What's the next meeting?
April second.
Yeah, we can do the next meeting.
April second, why not the first?
Yep.
Sure.
Chapter one, why not the first?
Okay, is there a motion to so direct?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay, aye. All set.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, don't go away, I guess.
You may wanna also pull off your comments, you think we could use more parking? Sassiness probably doesn't go well on file drawings.
Just checking to see if you really read.
Oh, yeah.
So we move now to an informal hearing. This is, uh, Isaket, Isaket? Application for a site development plan for an accessory apartment approval at twenty-six Maple Avenue.
So I'm trying to do the same thing again. Can you, can you get the?
Yes, please let me help you, Chuck.
Why don't you like to go back to your?
While you're doing that, Chuck, have you spoken to Bob before he, you know, came down sick? So he sent me a note, and he wanted to make sure that there were, you know, the service lines, did you, you know, aware of those issues?
Yes, uh, and I, I've, I've had conversations with water department, and I've got the.
I'll open them up.
Okay. I've had conversations with the water department, and I'm expecting, you know, they have three or four different ways they wanna handle this. I don't know if it's up to us now to decide which it is, but it has, has a lot to do with the distance.
Right.
Uh, and where the, the, where the service is coming in now, do we continue the service, or do we put a new meter box, or dig a whole new thing? That's not answered yet.
Right, and I think it was, they were concerned with making sure that there were mains for, I mean, meters, which are the mains going into the place.
Correct.
So I'm, just bring the board up to the speed, um, Bob sent me a note on this, make sure that we took this on.
I think that's typical, Jerry would like to have meters.
Right, so in discussion with Jerry Marshall, there were, there may be several service lines in and along the private right-of-way, which serves the three residences and now the accessory apartment. This type of system is known as a spaghetti system, since there's no single source of water emanating from a water main. This creates several difficulties with service line repairs and ownership metering. It's always best to have each residence obtain water from a main, town-owned, and each service to be in main degrees of the main. So we don't have that actual layout at this point, so obviously Bob was recommending more conversations, uh, with John Migley too.
And I did talk to John, and we do have two mains, or two meter boxes, right there, on the side of the hill by that drive, that access drive here.
Okay.
But where they go, uh.
No one knows it.
We don't know that, yeah.
Okay.
So the house, it's, so this.
Do you want to just point them instead?
It's not working?
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
The house at the top, then, is metered off the main street, whatever that street is.
That's the que- I, I know, right now, there are, there is, this is the main street, that's Maple Avenue. There's a house here, a house here, a house here. I, I know for sure that this water line comes here and goes into the back of this house. There's a drive, but for where all the other meters are, I don't know, but there's ba- there's two boxes, two boxes out on the road that are shut offs or turn ons, and who belongs to what, I have no idea. Uh, we also have a sewer that was put in by, when we did the sewer project. There's a live manhole right there, and a, an existing sanitary sewer that goes right out to the main road. And that ends up going down the hill and past the post. This is the post office property right here.
Yep.
So, could we have existing sewer on property, and we are not connected to it? This project will connect to that sewer, as well as pump from, from this apartment up to that, and, and join that, that, that sanitary sewer from the house. So sewer is pretty well straightforward. We have to get sewage from here up to there. We have to get the sewage from this house, which comes out to a subject system here, over to that. That's pretty straightforward, pretty easy.
And the water line has to be extended to the new apartment?
Yeah, the water.
Because that doesn't exist right now?
I'm showing a water line coming down this road before it goes into the house, taking off and continuing. There is no water line. The only thing that's here is electric, 'cause that was a, that was a studio for some artist, had a studio back there. That was a garage. We also have one last issue, and that, this whole parcel, right here, is town, is owned by town in Newcastle. And so, um, and I, and I've been at the clerk's office, we cannot find documentation that this is owned by the town. So, but the owner would love to have it. It's the end of the road, and she would love her property to, to have that. So they're looking at the possibility of purchasing it from township, the town board, number one, be able to identify it, number two, sell it. If they sell it, then the property will be much bigger, and a lot of our calculations will, will vary and change. Coverage and development will all change based on area.
So the existing dirt drive that's on that property that accesses the property, is, is that subject to an easement over the town property? That we don't know if the town owns?
We don't know, I looked, I checked every easement, I checked every deed.
Record either, I guess, huh?
No.
And the drive is proposed or existing, the hatched?
The hatch is existing.
Okay.
And, and, but what is real is this macadam right up to this point.
Yeah, I drove down there today.
Yeah, and that is part of.
And the new plan, would the, would that driveway get smaller? Because, I mean, that hatched driveway is huge.
It's a bit, it's a, it's rather a large dirt road.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what I put on, on my drawing was, I'd like to turn that into gravel. And then, and then Bob Seoli said, well, now you've added over a thousand square feet, and they gotta do the stormwater, and that, and that. And all that stuff. So, but it's not on my property. Only a little bit of it is, and.
Right, but then you need permission to put it on somebody else's property.
I don't.
Yeah, you can't have it both ways there.
No, they can't find it.
Let me, let me ask a question here, uh, 'cause I, I find the, the purchase of the, of the, uh, what we believe, or you believe, uh, is the town.
It says so, and I have a separate.
Right.
Schedule lay of deeds and meet deeds and battles.
So what I wanna ask is, if, if that comes to pass, purchase comes to pass, does it make any sense too? Is it even possible to actually subdivide the property into two lots?
Yeah, it is, it becomes a, it becomes more than.
So why wouldn't that be, would, would that be something that we, that would be something that would be done in the future? Or is that something would be done now?
It could be done, if.
What would be the proposal in that case?
Here's what the proposal would be, I'd add, it, it, there would be, you need a certain amount of area for this particular site. It would go right to the middle, and I would have sort of a tiny flag lot, right here. I've already laid it out, and, and I could add a house to this apartment. And at the same time, technically, I could add an apartment to this house.
Mm-hmm.
And it all fits the areas, but it would be a future development that they would be looking at.
It's not really what I'm thinking.
But, excuse me, Jennifer, how do we have the discussion if this piece of land is not identifiable at the moment?
We don't. Well, but we're trying to, they would be interested in buying.
I even mean the accessory apartment discussion, because you've got the gravel drive going over land which is not identified as belonging to any particular owner at this point.
That we know of, so, I mean, I've traced, I traced back, 'cause I, I saw the note in Bob Seoli's memo, um, his last comment, comment eight, about, uh, the applicant providing evidence that the town does in fact own that property. And I just, out of curiosity, you know, traced some of the deeds back.
Yeah.
In particular lot, and the deeds consistently refer, all the way back, refer to that as a proposed road.
Yeah.
That is a proposed, that's the only reference. It doesn't say who owns it, it just says it's a proposed road.
How far back did you get to go?
Back to. Interestingly, one of the, uh, people in the chain title has my maiden name, assuming no relation.
Maybe you own it.
Well, that changes the application.
I had the county clerk working for about forty-five minutes looking through this.
Back to the nineteen twenties.
Okay, that makes sense.
Nineteen twenty-three.
Because in the eighteen nineties, when you had the tornado go through there, that wasn't there.
I, I don't remember that.
Let me ask this question. If, if you proceed, if the applicant proceeds to buy the, is able to buy that land, uh, it changes the, I don't know, it doesn't necessarily have to change a lot, like, it could just be a separate lot, could be, would it be identified as a separate lot? How, how would that be done?
It would probably be a lot merger, because then that would be a, a non-conforming lot.
It's in a residential district, so it would have to be, have to be merged, right? So, does the technical mathematical aspects of that merger, would that change anything of substance what we're doing here in this proposal?
It would give them more property to work with.
Yeah, I mean, it would give them more, the, the zoning compliance, the numbers, the math would change.
It would be in compliance either way, right?
Correct.
They'll be in more compliance.
Correct. Well, there are, there, the, the issue being is that there really wasn't a lot of detail on the plan. You know, it was unclear as to the dimensions of things, the length of things, so that I can do the calculations. I would assume that it, this will be in compliance in one way or another. The question is, what are those details that are missing?
But still, you have Sheila's threshold issue, and how we have a discussion when you talk about the driveway and the access on a property that we don't know if it's part of the application.
Correct.
I mean, it's, it's terrible for the applicant, but, I mean.
Well, well, at this, at this point, if the, there, there is a structure there. Um, it, it looks as if it is, um, no longer used as a garage. There's a dirt road getting to this structure. The applicant is proposing a gravel road on town property. Right now, we've got no sense of ownership. He needs to receive town permission to put a gravel drive over a town roadway, or a property that is.
Maybe there's a town that owns the main.
Suspected town, or, or, or. Exactly, or he, the applicant develops what is on his property as part of the driveway to get to this residence, and use the dro- the, the throughway as dirt. It's a common driveway running from Maple Ave that extends through.
But even the macadam area, is that not in the town, or what of this mysterious owner's property?
It is, it's all, this whole thing is town.
Not the linear, not this avenue?
Not, not the little section that's next to the building.
How do you install a water line on somebody else's property without their, or sewer law approval?
Well, if it's in, in the town right-of-way, then.
Though I know that, but we don't know that.
We don't know that for sure.
So my question is, how do we proceed with any of this until that gets resolved?
There's two water lines right here.
And that's what Bob Seoli's memo asks for.
So we're really kinda dorky here, we, we really can't do very much unless we have that information. We could give you sort of a, some ground rules and parameters in terms of if you ever, if you ever own the property, you could do something.
Well, there's water lines now on that right-of-way.
Yeah, well, that's great, but.
But what we're gonna buy is just this.
We don't know whose water line it is.
Yeah, but if you're gonna buy, you need to just discuss that buying.
We're in the dark here on all of this.
Right, the next procedural step would be setting a public hearing, and I think we need a little bit more information about the status of that right-of-way.
And you're mentioning on the plan.
And what the proposal is with respect to that right-of-way.
Can't see having a public hearing, yeah, I think we don't. None of this is feasible right now.
Chuck, there, there are identified on your plan, uh, non-conforming setbacks. It would be helpful to footnote and identify that these are pre-existing non-conforming setbacks.
I could write that in, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it's important to document that, yeah.
Yeah, I remember, there's a bunch of stuff.
So are those setbacks from the eastern side?
Yeah, to here.
No, the, the.
The so-called front?
And there's no front or side yard?
And the apartment in the back, or the garage in the back, okay.
Yeah.
What I did do, uh, is, I said, okay, I'm gonna make believe that that's not part of my problem right now. So what I did do is I took this large driveway area that was over here and reduced it down to a simple little, little area, which brought the coverage calculations for this site into compliance. But, but what Rob, with Bob's memo is, he took all of this area and, and calculated this square footage, including that, and was kind of like, wait a minute, uh, I would like to have this whole property, and that might fit if, if, if we had it, so it's.
So, so if I may, Chuck, if you're gonna do your coverage calculations that way.
Yeah.
Then I would suggest you remove the gravel drive from the town-owned property.
Yeah.
Or the suspected town-owned property, and show access to that driveway for the cot, for the accessory apartment.
Yeah.
On that property.
Well, it's kinda, I don't know how you're gonna do it, 'cause.
Yeah, I don't know how you do it.
This is a hill, I gotta get in here somehow.
No, 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 you, you, there's a town roadway there that you've been using to get to the. No, 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 no. There's a town roadway there that you've been using to get to this property.
Right.
It is cleared to drive down and turn-
Let's, I'm sorry, let's go to first principles. We don't know whether that's a town roadway or not.
Correct.
It could be. So the implication, anybody's assumption that it is gets us nowhere right now. I think that, I think that needs to be, I'm sorry, I think that needs to be resolved until, I think, until this board takes up this application, because we don't know what the application is.
Well, we've both put a lot of time looking for that. We can't find it. So what, the next step-
Have you gotten a title company involved?
Actually, we're searching title. We're doing a title search as we speak.
A title company should be consulted to-
That's one thing. The second-
See what they can do, what they can ensure.
What kind of latent rights do they have for using something that nobody's objected?
It depends on who owns it. If it's under town ownership, you can't have adverse possession against the town. If it's a private owner, then that is a possibility.
Okay.
So I say we adjourn until we figure this out.
Yeah, it's, it's really no point. We just can't talk about it intelligently.
But you couldn't provide more detail on the plan?
What you got?
Exactly, yeah.
Water.
Dimensions.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I have a question for Sabrina. Your last note here, has work started on, because when I was there, there's a lot of construction material in the driveway, and we've had lately a lot of people doing work that they shouldn't be doing.
Yeah, he's insulating the outside. That's another thing that's happened here. I have a concrete block building. We're putting two inches of insulation on the outside. That's what's on the property. He's also, he's also putting insulation around his house, so he's doing both at the same time.
The building department has been out there.
Gotcha.
So this is permitted work?
Say again?
Building permit work. It's been permitted?
Well, you don't need permit to put insulation on a building.
No, I, that's true, but is there anything else going on?
No. Well, actually, he did a lot of demolition.
Need a permit for that, don't you?
Um, it's interior.
Is there a size requirement?
Just let's do the right thing and make sure you get your permits.
Okay, the building department has been out there. I keep hearing this, and that sounds like sound advice, that they've been out there, and it's not our problem.
It's getting addressed.
Okay, good.
But I could, I could see down the road that if, if, so to speak, that this, you know, this, I like the idea of getting, not making this gravel, because that just compounds, you know, ownership issues. But there is an existing, this is an existing sewer line?
Nope, this is gonna be planned.
No, it's new, it's gonna be built.
Okay, so and why, and is there existing sewer line here?
Nope, planned.
In the front?
It's a septic system right here.
It's got a hook into the sewer system.
I see. Well, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I know you got a hill here, but I wouldn't be putting new stuff here. Like, you're not gonna put the gravel in, why are you gonna put a pipe there? Water, you know, you have water coming in. Water could come around this way, if you really-
Every septic, every sewer system goes into somebody, into the road. That's where that is. That happens to be in the, the pavement of that wood.
Okay, well, that's a question. Who, has anyone investigated with the public works as to who put the sewer in?
Exactly.
It's been there when they did the whole sewer project.
What project?
What project, yeah.
The sewer, they did it back in the, the late eighties or the late seventies.
Eighteen or nineteen?
They put sewers down the whole district.
So they would know on whose land they were putting the sewer, you would think. Are there any records there?
Yeah, right. I would check.
But if that house wants to connect to the sewer, it goes right into that right-of-way. If that house wants to connect in the sewer, it goes right into that road.
Okay.
I mean, that's-
All right, so you've got some research to do.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, we have a request for an extension, and this is for Citron Foreland.
When am I coming back?
When you've, when you've revised plans.
When you have the material.
And land.
Why wouldn't you have ownership information?
And revised plans with detail.
Or give me a deadline.